June 4th, 2019, Harris County Board of Commissioners speaking. How to order? If you will, bow your hands for the invocation, please. Dear Lord, we're so thankful for another beautiful God-given Harris County day. We're thankful of the blessings that you bestowed upon us and our citizens today and in the days past, and we're thankful for the blessings to come. And Lord, we just pray that you provide a hedge of protection around our first responders and those who've served to keep us free so that we can have meetings like this and give us the wisdom or the more commissioners to make the right decisions for the entire county. All these things we ask in Jesus' name. Would you stand for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under the God, in the vessel, with liberty and justice for all.
The first item on our agenda tonight is approval of the GATs helping the regular session. I made the 21st, the Budget War Section 2, I made the 21st, and the Budget War Section 3, I made the 28th. Is there a motion? Motion and second, are there any questions or changes that haven't been given to Nancy? Okay, all those in favor of approving? Motion, please. The next item on the agenda under O Business is the appeal or Planning Commission decision by Mr. Charles McCann. The appeal was discussed during the May 7th meeting, tabled to the May 21st meeting, and again, tabled to this meeting in order for Brian Williams, Community Development Director, and Sandy Wilson, Health Department, Environmental Health Specialist 4, to be present to respond to questions and comments from the board regarding this issue. Mr. McCann is pending the decision of the Planning Commission, which was made on March 20th, to uphold action by Brian Williams to deny the division of 1.75 acres on an easement road into two smaller non-conforming lots because the county requires residential lots to be no less than two acres and the subdivision of lots on an easement road are limited to heirs and family members. So I am going to open a public hearing for the sake of the board asking questions and hearing comments from Mr. Williams and Ms. Wilson, and then Mr. McCann, if you have any rebuttal at that time, after they have finished, then you'll be allowed to rebut any. So we will open the public hearing, and if we could get Brian and Sandy to the front table. And I don't have any other questions. Do y'all have any questions of them or just their comments? No? So Brian, if you could give us your justification, and Sandy, you always know.
Mine is basically what you have on the reasons why I actually wrote it on the document that you brought in, which are the four things that's not meeting as per the board. One, it does not meet the two acre minimum requirement. Two, each lot shall butt on a public street for a distance of not less than 50 feet. And then per appendix B on subdivisions, we did private easement roads. The easement shall be 60 feet wide, and no property here, uh, no property shall hereafter be subdivided on a private easement road and shall butt on a public road or street.
Do you have any questions? So I understand that Mr. McCann first came to your office, he was the grandfather-in-law of 1.75 acres to be owned on, is that correct?
It's an existing lot of record. I don't use the term grandfather.
So he could have built on that lot?
He could build one house on that lot, yes ma'am.
Acres.
1.75 is good for one house, but we cannot divide that property.
For the townhouse.
If a house has a motherland suite attached to it, if they're connected by great ways, is that still considered a whole house?
Yes, it is one structure. It is not two separate structures. All of the electric, electrical plumbing, the water, everything goes through the primary structure. It is not a separate entity at all. It will not receive two addresses. It will be one address.
So there are some lots that Mr. McCann brought to us as examples. There are permitted structures on half-acre lots. What are the conditions of those lots that differ from this one?
Those lots exist already.
They're already planted lots?
They were planted many years ago.
Just as the 1.7?
Correct. Just as that was planted many years ago as well.
So it wasn't that they were treated differently?
No, 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 no. We go by that rule. Our, we don't have a choice.
So basically, if this lot had been planted to have two houses, it would have been fine?
If this plot was planted as a half-acre or quarter-acre back in the day when we accepted them as such, back in 94, 97, it'd be fine. As long as you can meet the Health Department requirements and the setbacks, we still allow you to build on a half-acre or a three-quarter acre or one acre mark, but you have to be able to meet those.
As long as it was planted, is that?
As long as it was planted prior to 2005, yes. Which is when the two acres were planted, of course.
Sandy Wilson, would that meet the Health Department standards if it were divided?
I have a standing lot, so I can't say for sure. I looked at some property that, or looked at a plat that you brought in.
Because I think Mr. McCann told us that he was...
He did come in. He brought two different sets of plans. One was to divide it into three lots, and then another one to divide it into two lots, and we looked at it. It's not our policy to advise on purchasing, but often we'll sit down with someone who's looking to build a house and go over all the basic things that would determine a septic system based on those facts, tell them yes or no as far as that being a building of a lot for a septic system. But I haven't been on this lot, so there'd be a lot of factors that I'd have to, not only look at it on paper, but it also includes looking at it to see before I would say yes or no as far as being a building of a lot.
So the Health, I'm sorry, I didn't catch you on... So the Health Department, as I'm reading here, it says that the Health Department has indicated it would approve the two-septic system if the division of the lot is approved. So that's not true. Y'all haven't indicated one way or the other.
We don't ever say that we would approve or disapprove unless we've seen the lot, gone through the application process, and actually put boots on the ground. We do that before everybody that comes in to apply. So we don't say yes or no definitively until we've actually seen the law. We do advise based on what's on paper.
Right.
You know, sometimes we can say right off, no, it's not a building of a lot, or that it needs to be written on paper, but to say yes or no.
Do you remember what you advised him on this?
I'm not sure what you're looking at.
Oh, where it says, has indicated it would approve the two-septic system?
She doesn't have those records.
Oh, okay. Says that the Health Department has indicated it would approve, it would approve the two-septic systems if the division of the lot is approved and if the water panel will not be affected by the septic systems. So do you recall that kind of advisement?
I probably talked to 100 people. I can't take it that I specifically remember what we told them, honestly. If I can look at, well, I guess it's not a question, but, again, without having said it, or without actually having looked at the lot, I would not have said yes or no to what we would have just approved of the law.
As far as size goes, possibly yes, but it depends on what the soil is and where the setbacks are, and that makes a big difference once you get out there on the ground. Is that right?
It does. What works on paper sometimes doesn't necessarily work on, when you're there. A lot of things need to look at. What I probably told him is that yes on paper disappears that it would appear to work for two. I'm pretty sure that we told him it would not work for three. Didn't even set, it didn't have a guidelines for three lots. But we could have told him on paper everything looked good. But we wouldn't have committed to yes or no on any lot without putting boots on the ground.
It also says that soil test has indicated that it could support up to seven bedrooms. So just by knowing that it might support up to seven bedrooms, that still would not give you enough information without looking physically be there to say yes or no.
Correct. And seven probably would, I would guess, probably would have been for a house on eight, seven total.
Right.
You know, four and three, whatever.
Any other questions?
Yeah. Brian, this, these other lots out there, these are not part of a planted subdivision, are they?
Yes, sir.
These are just questions over the years?
Yes, sir. In fact, several of the lots that are mentioned on, one of the, one of the things that Mr. McCann presented was, he talked about easements. One of them was 1998, one of them was '76, '99, '94. All of those were well before the two acre minimum, and even the...
Was this the only lot, this is what was left out there after everything else had been sold out?
Pretty much. This is out here on the corner.
1.9 acres, what's the zoning on it now?
A1.
All right, now, A1, the only use for, you see, the agricultural or can be used for residential.
Can be used for residential.
But you have to have a two-acre residential.
Correct.
And then what about the easements? Lot fronting, does it front on a public road?
The easement that he has exists, is 16 feet wide, and it does front on Sturgis Road. But it is 16 feet wide, and our ordinance strictly states that we no longer subdivide on easements anymore as of 2009.
Okay, anyone have anything else? Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. McCann?
I didn't know, I'm gonna head and print it out for ordinance. I didn't know if everybody had it with you or not, and I could pass this out if you wanted, or I can just keep it to myself and read it. It states that the minimum size lot requirement for low-density residential is two acres with public water, with the exception of lots reviewed and approved by the Harris County Planning Commission as a variance or waiver, as stipulated in Articles Sections 1701, 1702, 1703. That allows, there's, and then it's two acres with a private potable water. If you are on private potable water, you are not afforded that same exception of being able to obtain a variance, waiver, or conditions. So in accordance with that, under Section 1702 waivers, it says where it finds that due to the special circumstances of a particular plat, the provision of certain required improvements is not requisite in the interest of the public health, safety, and general welfare. It may waive these requirements. In reference to the comments that were made, we'd like to rebut those as far as them being necessary to the public health, safety, and welfare. There's been no evidence presented to this board that what we are requesting is contrary to those items. If you will look in the documentation that was provided, the May 1st constitutional reservation rights, you can see that point lot. This is Mr. McCann's property. As you can see, there was also a table provided. Within a quarter of an acre, pardon me, a quarter of a mile for Mr. McCann's property, there are 21 parcels. Only three of those parcels meet your two-acre minimum. I understand that that was done before your ordinance. However, there's been no evidence that provides Mr. McCann's request to subdivide is contrary to the public health, welfare, or safety. In fact, there are one, two, three easements that exist that serve at least two access easements for similarly situated. By granting Mr. McCann's request, you're not changing the aesthetics of the community. You're not increasing any of the road traffic or anything else. It's going to be the same, there's no impact. The fact that this property is a deeded piece of property distinguishes it from other requests that would come before that, this board, and the fact that we've shown you in the prior hearing that the topography map shows that there were previously three structures on this particular piece of property, shows that it is a history of having multiple residences. That is something else that would distinguish it from further requests that would come before this board. As I explained in the last hearing, the Supreme Court of Georgia is very clear that your legislative construction of these ordinances require that when you adjudicate or when you apply these ordinances, they're applied as written. And for this, it says, "Due to the special circumstances of this particular plat and this particular property." This is not starting, you know, open gates of approving two-acre parcels everywhere. This is just for this particular one, given the surroundings of what is similarly situated, the fact that it's a deeded lot, and the fact that, as Mr. Williams said, if he chose to build a structure with an in-law, you would have the same amount of square footage, the same number of inhabitants in residing in that area as you would with Mr. McCann's plan. So therefore, there is no detriment to the public health, welfare, or safety. We have clearly shown that we satisfy this criteria, and your ordinance says that you contemplated that there would be lot sizes smaller than two acres if they are on public water, which this one would be, as long as it satisfies that criteria that I just articulated for you. And I believe Mr. McCann wanted to address, did you want to address the soil? One thing is, is we supplemented that soil survey with another one that would have come before you one, for the hearing, that showed that they went back and recalculated all the soils, and that would have allowed for a four-bedroom home on each lot, so that would have been a total of eight bedrooms. I wanted to make sure that was clear in the record.
What I'd like to try to do is clarify in my meeting with Sandra Wilson with the Health Department, and, you know, just briefly, I've been working on this about six months with Brian and Sandra, but they've been extraordinarily helpful, okay? It's been a long, difficult process for all of us. We put a lot of time in this, a lot of money in this. And, you know, Brian, from the beginning, he told me what I needed to do to increase the odds that my variance would be approved. I walked down that list, and I'm thinking, I'll check every single thing he's asked me to do. Double privilege. And we brought it to the commission's attention. We brought our surveys here. What we did the first time, with Sandra, I had a soil survey from Brian Lucas, Lucas Soil Evaluation, and that permitted up to seven bedrooms. When I showed her, I showed her two maps, and the one from several months ago, five or six months ago, I showed her two maps, two surveys. One was a three-lot plan, six tenths of an acre piece. One was a two-lot plan, the nine tenths of an acre piece that we have before you now. The three-lot plan did meet the requirements for the septic, the way I understood it, and only for the three-bedroom home and two, two-bedroom homes. It's more like a cabin. I remember this quite clearly, that Sandra looked at the two plans and she kinda to the side and said, "I like your two-lot plan. Beautiful." Okay? So I asked her at the time if she would approve the lots based on the soil survey we had. She said, "If you brought me a recorded plat and a soil survey and showed it clear, I would approve your request." I completed application, approved your request. During that time, in the last few months, I noticed that there was a fairly large error on the soil survey. I contacted Brian Lucas again, and what he did was, all the lots that are on the lake that are Georgia Power lease lots, when they compute the acres, they take it all the way to the edge of the water, okay? On all the deeded lots, there is a high-water contour line on the property, and it's typically just an average 15 or 20 feet back from the water. Well, he computed everything up to the water, and it, or not up to the water, to that high contour line, and then he took the 50-foot setback and he cut me up a quarter acre of property. When he added that quarter acre back in, because technically you can go all the way to the water, and I got two, I got eight and a half bedrooms total. So two lots divided by eight and a half. Tell me where I'm wrong, Brian, because I remember this stuff.
No, no, 5.5 acre is my property.
You're at, you're at...
This is, this is, you're bubbling, you're bubbling.
Um, he's right, 5.5 acre is my property, okay? But what I will be doing with permitted plots is I will be leasing a dockright from Georgia Power, and that'll take my total usable area all the way down to the edge of the water, okay? So Brian Lucas agreed with me that that extra 15 or 20 foot strip all the way around my property, my property has 750 feet with lake frontage. It's a quarter of an acre of usable property, okay? That he could have back into the soil survey, and here it is. Two lots. I have 24,000 square feet of used classified, soil classified for septic use on each lot. Each lot. Now, I'm only proposing to build probably 3,000 square foot houses. Within the last few months, and I brought this up one of the last hearings, 1560 Bartlett Ferry Road is eight tenths of an acre. It's next door to your water intake for Harris County. They approved at least a four-bedroom, if not a five-bedroom, on a lot smaller than what I'm proposing.
I think the main thing, as far as going back and forth, and it was about how many bedrooms and everything, what the soil is, and Ms. Williams saying she would need to be out, I think that what we would be looking for is an approval based upon anything being conditional upon the Department of Health approving, you know, she's saying she has to go out there, what the soils are and what those are. I mean, it would have to still meet the Section 511, 31, 0.052, that it'd be 25 foot from the lake. The next section, 0.07, would be that it be 50 feet from the normal pool, or pardon, that's the absorption field, be 50 feet from the normal pool. He's not asking for a waiver of all that. He would still have to go get all the approvals that are associated with all of those aspects. So I don't want to get into the semantics of if there was a difference right now between or going back and forth, but just say, yes, we're gonna meet all those requirements. The request is to subdivide the property as is proposed and as is similar here, and use those existing rights for this other piece because it clearly shows on this particular piece of property that those improvements are not requisite in the public health, safety, or general welfare. And since this board has not had any evidence presented that it is contrary to those, I would argue that you have a lawful duty to approve them, granted with conditions, because that's what the law says, is that it's your right to approve with whatever conditions you feel are appropriate. But I would argue that the ordinance requires that it is approved with conditions.
Okay, do you think else?
I'm happy to meet with Brian and Sandra on the lot and make a subject to Health Department approval.
All right, anybody, any, the commissioners have anything else?
Close the public.
Close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
Now Chairman, the motion before you is to, whether or not to approve the action taken by the Planning Commission, which was the denial of the request, or in the reverse, and the, and the conditions that were cited and gives Planning Commission the circumstances to, to some waivers, but to those waivers to my plan. So I'll show that in the remarks.
All right, thank you. Is there a motion? I'll make a motion to get the question on the floor that we denied the request and uphold Planning Commission's decision. And I'll say, all those in favor? All those opposed? All right, motion, please. Thank you. All right, the next item on our new business is our wellness grant application. The county has been receiving wellness grants during the past several years, and it is requested that approval be given to apply for the same issue. It's an annual $2,000 grant. The funds, which average about $30 per company, that must be used for elder wellness. Any questions on that too? If there is no match involved. So is there a motion?
I'll make a motion then. We continue this.
And I will second. Are there any questions or discussion? Any of those in favor? All right, motion, please. The next item on the agenda, and you should have a revised copy, of the Emergency Management Ordinance. This is the first reading of the... Second reading will be at our next meeting on June 18th. This is the Emergency Management Ordinance, which is required. And it basically updates our latest, our last Emergency Management Ordinance. I'm not gonna read the entire thing because y'all will probably fall asleep if I do it.
It's online, I think it's in.
Yeah, it will be online tomorrow, tomorrow morning, if you want to read it. But it's about 11 pages, and I don't think you want to hear all that. So it says, the first reading will have the second reading on June 18th. Does anybody have, yes? Does anybody have any comments, Mike? Do you have any comments?
Unless you all have something, one of the revisions that came to Mr. McCann. Just some wording, changes on there. The way the state's doing everything, says this is printed out.
This is a, 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 an ACCG, so most counties are gonna have something very similar, not the same ordinance that you've got in here. And your current ordinance is kinda like this, but it needs expanding.
Anyone else? All right. We'll do that one on June 18th. The next item, although right now, about one minute, we're due to have a public hearing on the Planning Commission amendment to the zoning laws, the PRD. And I would like to table this. There are a couple of items that the board commissioners would like to determine if we can place those items in the PRD. I have a couple of changes, so I'd like to change, table this to the next meeting, Nancy. And then the next public hearing is on the budget for FY '19 and '20. And then the next public hearing is on the budget for FY nineteen and twenty, and I'm going to let Randy give you a quick overview. This is the first of two public hearings regarding the proposed budget. There were work sessions held on May the seventh, the twenty-first, the twenty-eighth, and the thirtieth, and the board heard of department heads, constitutional officers. And the second public hearing is scheduled to be held during the June eighteenth meeting, followed by adoption of the budget. So, Randy, if you'd like to give us a recap, please.
Madam Chairman, Board Commissioners, you need to call a public hearing, don't worry.
Yes, for public hearings, don't worry.
Madam Chairman, Board Commissioners, again, this is budget time, and this is the proposed FY nineteen, twenty annual budget. Again, it has, it was given, it was submitted in, in early May, for our website, back in early May, for public consumption, and this is the first public hearing. We've made up for four budget workshops thus far. As a very preliminary overview, you know, the budget contains various funds, the general fund being the biggest fund of your basic county departments. You can see on, in the, in the table contents, the special revenue funds, capital project funds, debt service fund, the enterprise funds, some long-term debt schedule, and some statistical information. As you go through the budget, all of these funds are detailed by fund. Again, the general fund is the biggest fund, and it totals, the proposal totals right at twenty-three million dollars for general fund revenues and expenditures. And you can see on, on page twenty through twenty-three, all the various revenues the general fund has, all the way from taxes to licenses, permits, intergovernmental revenue, charges for services, fines for fixtures, investment income, contributions and donations from private sources, misfinance revenue, and other financing sources. So, the general fund, the biggest, the biggest fund in the county is right at twenty-three million dollars of the forty million, of the thirty-five point one million dollar annual budget. And this is where your property taxes come in, to pay for normal county operations. On page twenty-four is all the expenses for the general fund. Again, it's all the departments you normally find in the county government, you know, animal control, community center, community development, coroner, district attorney, public works, parks and rec, tax assessor, tax commissioner, all those kind of various, various departments. And the, and the county funds from various outside agencies, they're not part of the county government, but they're important enough to be, to receive funding. That's the D. Fax Department, Health Department, Library, Senior Citizen Center, and the Georgia State Patrol. So, again, general fund revenues and expenditures are right at twenty-three million dollars. And there is not requested tax increase this year, but is, it is assumed that there will not be a rollback rate in the military, once the military is set in August. The, the budget contains a two point five percent cost of living, cost of living allowance for all eligible employees beginning July first, and that cost is right at three hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars. And also, the employee health insurance had no planned changes, and it experienced some good news, five percent reduction in premiums, or about ninety-four thousand dollars less than last year. However, the board did agree in previous meetings to increase the dependent coverage from fourteen percent to twenty-five percent that's covered by the county. So, that's the general fund in essence, twenty-three million dollars. Then we go to the special revenue funds. There are seven special revenue funds. Again, these are legally restricted revenues to be used for legally restricted purposes. Those seven include confiscated asset funds, that's under the direction of the sheriff for his confiscated assets. The county jail fund is another special revenue fund, and those are revenues that are placed on criminal and traffic cases, and cases involving violation of the county ordinances. It is an add-on to those funds to fund the county jail and county prison operations. The county law library fund, again, that is another add-on to various criminal and civil cases in the various courts of the county, and those funds are legally restricted for library, for law library operations, as overseen by the law library board trustees. The drug, abuse treatment, and education fund is another special revenue fund. Again, it's restricted money placed on various court funds, and legally restricted for education and training programs for various alcohol and controlled substances kind of top programs. The other special revenue fund is the nine-one fund. The nine-one fund, of course, is the emergency operations center, and the nine-one center, that when somebody calls nine-one, this is where the phone call goes, it's a twenty-four seven operation. You can see the revenues in this one are various charges for landline, wireless, prepaid charges, and you can see where it pays for all of this, this operations. Unfortunately, the nine-one fund isn't funded out. The charges do not pay for the, the charges are not sufficient enough to pay for the department's operating expenses, so the general fund has to transfer money from the general fund into the nine-one fund, and that is a common occurrence. The hotel motel tax fund is one of the special revenue funds, and again, when you stay in a lodge, stay at a, a lodging facility in the county, you pay a tax, and that tax goes to the county, and the county by contract allocates it to the Chamber of Commerce to promote the county and tourism within the county. And the last special revenue fund is the local victim assistance program fund. Again, that's under the direction of the elected district attorney. Again, it's a court fund, placed on fines throughout the courts in the county, and is only used for carrying out victim assistance activities. So, that's the seven special revenue funds. So, we've done the general fund and the special revenue fund. And then we go to the capital project funds, and the county has denied these, with some are closed, because that project, those projects haven't been included. The first one is the public improvements authority fund. Again, this is a conduit that was created by the county for debt purposes. So, the PIA, the Public Problems Authority, issues debt, and it runs through the, the county through this authority, and there are various debts in here. One is the community center debt runs through this fund, as well as some waterworks debt runs through this fund. Splot two thousand and four, those funds have been exhausted, and this fund is depleted. Splot twenty, two thousand and nine, this, that splot fund has also been depleted and is closed. There is a little bit of money left in the splot fourteen fund that ended March thirtieth of twenty nineteen, and of this fund, it's splot fourteen, twenty fourteen, there's about one point seven five six million remaining, and we hope to spend that in these various projects, including, you know, recreation scoreboards, soccer complex pavilion, having road improvements, pitch drive improvements, the L-Mid match, community center improvements, some public works equipment, and various things such as that. So, once the one point seven five six million is depleted, then that fund will be closed also. And then you've got the T. Splot twenty thirteen fund. Again, that was approved by voters many years ago. It will end December thirty-first, twenty twenty-two, and that was a ten-year splot project, and it's for transportation purposes. And again, it's based on sales tax revenues. And the splot twenty nineteen fund, that was recently approved by voters last year, it took effect April first of this year, and we did get our, we did receive our first check for splot twenty nineteen, and that is to be used for citizen voter-approved projects, such as renovation of old library, volunteer fire department equipment, EMS equipment, sheriff's vehicles, brunt ban equipment, along with public safety equipment, and allocations to cities for city projects. The library reconstruction fund has been depleted, and it is closed, and the economic development fund has been closed. Even though they've been closed, there's historical data that we've got to keep in here to make everything all balance out. And then the Rails to Trails project fund, that is an ongoing project to, to keep track of the revenues and expenses of the Rails to Trails project. And that, and that, we need to receive bids, the bids were open on May thirtieth, and the board will consider those bids on June the eighteenth, to begin that long-awaited project, or that's what Andy says in the newspaper. Rails to Trails, in this case, is one point four six six million dollars. Then we go to debt service fund, there's only one thing in the debt service fund, the Callaway Conservation Eastment. Again, that is an ongoing debt payment, where the Callaway Foundation pays the county, and the county pays for this debt, and that should end in about twenty twenty-seven. And then the county has three enterprise funds. These are business-type funds. These are the, the county's business accounts, which is the airport fund, the solid waste fund, and the waterworks fund. The airport fund, again, the airport receives revenues in, in gas sales, hangar rentals, tie-down fees, and it expends money on selling the fuel, and currently, we're doing several projects in the airport. One is, right now, today, the airport is closed. It was closed on June, or, it was closed until June ninth, because the airport runway is getting remarked and cracked sealed in, in that project. So, it should reopen on June the ninth, and that's a long-awaited project to remark the runways of the airport, and we are finishing, completing the fence project. So, in a few months, the airport will have it fully fenced in around the airport for wildlife, to get wildlife out and strike in the airplanes. The solid waste fund, another important fund, this, the county collects money through its hundred forty-nine-dollar fee on a tax bill to generate funds to help collect the county's solid waste curbside once a week. And of course, these revenues go toward funding the, the solid waste collection, curbside collection once a week, to pay for the drivers and trucks. And also, we use the solid waste fund as a way to balance the budget every year. So, and again, this is, this is not any different year, the, 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 the entire budget was balanced with a million-dollar transfer in from the solid waste fund, and about three hundred thousand dollars use of general fund reserves. So, we're about one point three million dollars so far in having to use other funds to fund the annual budget, which is typical, and it's less than last year, so that, so we're on the right track, but we're not where we need to be yet. The waterworks fund is another important department, where the water fund receives water from tap fees and service charges for water service, and that is to pay the employees of the water department to maintain the eighty-five-hundred customer water department. So, basically, that is the, the, the county's thirty-nine point one million dollar budget in a nutshell. You have your long-term debt schedule to show all the county's debt, and some statistical information, and so far, of the three work sessions, the county has added back three hundred and one thousand, five hundred and eighty-eight dollars, and eliminated or reduced a hundred and seventy thousand, five hundred and eighty dollars, which was a net add of a hundred and thirty-one thousand and eight dollars, and this amount will cover general fund reserves.
Is that included in the three fifty-five, I mean, in the, how much, three hundred thousand that you said would cover?
No, this is in addition to.
In addition to.
So, when the budget was proposed, we had, we balanced the budget of a million from solid waste in two hundred and ninety, on page twenty-three, two hundred and ninety-six thousand, four sixty-nine, to balance the budget, those two numbers. But now, we added to that two ninety-six, four sixty-nine, we added a hundred and thirty-one thousand and eight dollars. And then the capital project fund, we eliminated both the revenues and expenses for the Groves Water Sewer debt, so that, that's been eliminated, two hundred and sixteen thousand dollars, but that does not affect the general fund. And then the enterprise funds, we added twenty-five thousand for waterworks property So, that's the changes made thus far, and I, I, I have had one additional request from the part-time airport attendant to increase that salary of it. So, that's the only request the board has heard yet, to increase the, part-time airport attendant, he makes eleven eighty-eight an hour, to increase it to twenty-four dollars an hour. So, that was his request, and I said I would bring it in, and put a request like the, like other departments have done.
Thank you.
So, that is a thirty-nine million dollar budget in eight minutes.
Right, well, that's a good overview of a lot of information.
And the changes made thus far, but we're not over yet, I don't think.
No, I don't, I don't think so.
And this is on, to be on schedule, this, the next second public hearing will be June eighteenth, and then adoption thereafter, but it has to be adopted by June third.
Is there anyone who wants to speak in, in favor of this budget? Is there anyone who wants to speak in opposition to this budget? Okay.
Want to ask a question?
Yes, go on, here.
Have we found out any information about what we discussed at the last budget meeting with the hotel motel tax and all that, and, you know, that we can keep some instead of giving it all to the hotel, or to, to, to the chamber?
Yes, as discussed previously, right now, the county has a contract between the county and the chamber to give a hundred percent of the proceeds to the chamber for tourism promotion. But the chamber has not given us a budget, how, how they're going to spend that money. So, therefore, the contract, I think, is up for grabs. We do have a hotel motel expert from Department of Public Affairs coming down to visit with us on June the tenth, Monday, Monday, June tenth, to help us, to help the Chamber of Commerce craft a legal budget, and I, I expect that that to be forthcoming soon thereafter. But if the board wants to, the board by law can keep three of the five percent to be put in general fund for, to be used for, to be used for any purpose, not promotion, anything, but it will just go in the general fund and just be here. We will not be promoting the county with it, it will just go in the general fund. And three of the five equates to about fifty thousand dollars. So, three percent of the county can legally keep would be fifty of the ninety thousand. And in the chamber, we get nine, four, forty thousand to promote the county industry. That is an option that could be considered.
I wouldn't say that the three percent that the county would keep, we wouldn't promote the county. We, we would use it.
We could.
I mean, what I'm saying, we would use it for county purposes, which in essence is still.
Right.
Whatever we're trying to do.
We could buy a car.
And I'm not, right, I'm not talking about air travel, but whatever we're doing.
Right.
Well, I think we need to look at doing that, honestly, because I know that the chamber have been asked a couple times for a budget, you know, and I think if we can legally keep up to three percent, and that's what we should do, to help go into the general fund to help the county do what we need to do also, and that still leaves them money to promote, still gives them the money that they need to promote it. And I did today, as I was doing my, teaching my class at CSU, we took a field trip to the Coca-Cola Space Science Center, and I did find one of the brochures that had Pine Mountain in there, and it was Pine Mountain, Callaway Gardens, and there was four pages in there of Harris County Chamber of Commerce promoting us. So, they are doing something, but I think if we're able to legally keep that three percent, that's what we should do.
And we can. It's up to the board to make that, best we can.
Do you have a question on the insurance?
Yeah, on the insurance. If we go to a ten thousand dollar deductible, our premium stays the same as it is?
Yes.
So, why would we add? So why would we add 25,000 to save 5,000?
Because basically, uh, right now, we're deducted 5,000. So if a if a car gets wrecked, then, or we're only out 5,000. So if it's a 20,000 car, you know, we're out 5,000, but the insurance gives us, you know, 15,000. And we wreck a lot of cars.
Deductible is not on every single.
Yes, and every single car, including the insurance office.
I understand, never mind my question.
So we could save 25,000, but the first five accidents would erase all that.
I was thinking it's just the property here at the water.
It's it's countywide. And but the reason for the increase is because the filter plant came online, so we shifted all of that expense to waterworks.
And on what other subject, um, on the South of Philines, they should have an estimate by next week for the first power. So hopefully, we'll be able to either, we'll be able to act on that.
Because that's not in here yet.
No.
No, it's not.
Now, Thomas said that he has been going back for, for him and Ken, and they've gone back for trying to get the right uh, information so they can have a proper quote.
Anybody have any other questions or any more discussion on the budget? Mr. County Manager, a bid award for the chipping and grinding of the woodstool debris in Ellis Park.
Project will grow away. Again, everybody knows we had a March, a very bad tornado year, March the 3rd. The county and its forces collected, and many other forces, collected over 2, 2,500 dump truck loads of storm debris, west storm debris, from the south part of the county, the north part of the county, and the west part of the county. And it all went to Ellis Park, that was the disposal site. And we collected a lot. And the original disposal method was to burn it, but we kept getting more and more debris. Again, 2,500 dump truck loads. So the the material is not properly laid out for burning, is this too massive amount of of debris to burn? So therefore, we prepared a bid and distributed it to a a to companies that would chip and grind the material and transport it offsite. So we estimated, since the material is unknown, we estimated about 27,500 cubic yards of material. We bid it out, received eight bids, you can see the bids one through eight, the low bid per cubic yard, the chip and grind and transport offsite, the low bid was $4.55 per cubic yard and 90 days to complete, 27,500, which cost about 125,000, of which that is the budget. And if the board approves this operation and project, the county will need to post employee in the park to physically count the truck loads to determine the capacities and quantity of material that has been transported to keep track of the 27,500 cubic yards. Because all these vehicles, all and all these companies are using, they're gonna be using different vehicles. Big dump trucks, little dump trucks, trailers, combination thereof. So and once the 27,500 cubic yard amount has been reached and the budget amount has been expended, then the county will reassess the situation, determine how much of the material remains. An option therefore after that could be to authorize a company to continue their shipping and grinding operation and pay them a little extra money. Or if the remaining amount is manageable, maybe the county can burn the remain, the remainder of the collected storm debris. Again, the funds were included in the budget, in this budget for 125,000, which is the low bid. And then our goal is to clean up the collected storm debris, get it offsite, and then clean up the rest of the park as time permits over the course of a year or so, and open the park back up in about two years. That is our goal. And this is, this is the beginning of that goal. If the board approves this, we think the 27,500 cubic yards will be a good dent. It might be a big dent, it could be a medium sized dent. We just don't.
We're just not sure.
We're not sure. So that's why, let's spend 125, let's see where we're at, reassess, burn it if we can, cause that's relatively inexpensive if it's manageable. So there's our concept.
Is there a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve the low bid 125,000 to victory grinding in Fortson.
I'll say it.
All right, there's a motion in second, any questions or discussion?
And if the board wants to proceed further beyond that 125,000, then it will be at the same unit cost, the 455. We 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 made that sure of that.
When will they start?
We have to get bonds, insurance, then start within two weeks, I would think, and be finished within any days. Or earlier bits of help.
This was the worst tornado to get Harris County. Long as we was sitting around here to recall, and I had asked Clay, what's the budget impact of it? And because we had a state emergency from the governor's office, we had a lot of state help. And so our budget really wasn't impacted that much because of it. So this year is the budget impact and then into next year, but I think 125,000, we can get this cleaned up from the worst storm we've had, and Mr. Harris County will do it well. And I hate to have to spend that kind of money to do this, but it's necessary, it is necessary.
Well, we don't need to just let it sit there.
It's gonna be a new park at some point, and we have to begin the process of getting there.
All right, all those in favor of accepting the low bid of 125 to victory grinding?
The next item is project updates, again, the county has less than 30 days remaining as fiscal year. July 1st, July 1st will always, for me, be New Year's Day. The first one, a little good news, we put in the budget 30,000 for a 911 center replacement generator. We have received from GMA notification that our application has been submitted approved to go to the next level, which this generator is part of that process. So that's good news, we're almost guaranteed funding by going to the second level. Number two, pitch drive, again, we're waiting to to acquire several pieces of needed roadway for that project before we can design it. Number five, the rails to trails project, been going on for many, many years, the bid opening was on May 30th. It will be before the board on, for consideration, June the 18th. And the bids, we received four bids, I believe, and they were really good bids. They were right where we needed them to be, at least a low bid for budget purposes. Number six, the lodge at Ellis Park, we're talking to the insurance company to give us more money because we believe they have, they missed a few things. So we're, we're talking to them to increase the scope of work we have to do to the lodge and give us more funding. And once we get that, those final documents, we're gonna bid out that project for repairs. Number seven, the airport wildlife fence project, that's that's happening now. It should be completed by maybe late July, early August. And the airport runway and crack seal project is underway, they started Monday morning, and the airport's closed from June 3 through June 9th, and that, and that project should be finished by June 9th. Number 14, the commerce of master plan, that's been submitted to the state, we're waiting for approval from the state. Number 15, DeSous's reroute stream location, the attorneys reviewing contract documents on that project.
I will say that I reviewed all the contract, the contract, they bid the pavement performance bonds, and I am started drafting the letters to go out to notify them to their default and to comply with the timed elements that are in the pavement performance bonds, and they should go out shortly.
Number 16, install third lining side at the Northwest Harris Business Park, talked to the contractor today. He has received a West Point sign permit that was required, and concrete was poured today, and the sign should be installed Friday or next Monday on the corner of Davidson Road and Progress Parkway, where the old sign was. Number 17, clearing ground 35 acres at the Northwest Harris Business Park, mulching beds are being, are being prepared now. So that should go out very soon. And number 18, chip and grind the collected storm debris at Ellis Park, that was approved tonight, and that project will start, and I hope the 125,000 will be heard most of that time. You can see, all, most of the projects have been completed. Oh, on page eight of the report is the first month of the newest lost 2019 check. So the first check was 218,000, 979.06. And we we budgeted for this fiscal year of 600,000, so we are well above what we thought. So things are, things are going, things are going to go.
Any questions?
Did you mention, when I stepped out, about the plaque getting put up at the community center?
The plaque was put up on Thursday, I think, Thursday. It looks real good, a long, long time coming. And we're gonna make the community center live up to, live up to that plaque.
Mr. Andy, you gonna go and take a picture of it?
I actually would, Bob, we can move.
Thank you, sir.
Nothing else, thank you, Randy. Mr. County Attorney, Mr. Taylor.
Yes, ma'am, I only have one, one item, and that's a resolution to accept DUD court in Brentford Lane, which is heavily related to subdivision phase two. To remind you how we do this, quite a long years ago, I rewrote this this policy of this ordinance. What you wanna do, this, what they're, what you're doing is taking title to the roads. But before you, it used to be that they just would send you a deed, and then you'd have to go out and make sure that, check the title ourselves and make sure that they had the title and group gonna be able to get a good title to the, to the road. So we, we switched it around, and we now put the obligation on the developer to, uh, once they finish the subdivision, to bring a, a, of course, a plant that we say have to have, to bring a deed to the county from the owner of the property. They have to bring us a title insurance policy or title insurance commitment in subsequently a policy. And a title insurance company, companies in their, their, uh, quite, use quite a bit particularly in mortgage business because one thing you, you always wanna do when you're buying a piece of property is wanna make sure that you're gonna get a good title to it, uh, and you can got the 100% ownership on it. So what we require them to do is to start, uh, is to give us a title insurance policy with, and then also after, after they, after we, and then also post a bond on the paving on the road, because we put that obligation on them, on the developers to pave the road. And so we've had to make a posted bond for it to keep up with the road for, I believe, periods of two years.
Twenty, four, four years?
Four years. Then we require them to, you know, have a deed property to us, and then also to provide us an insurance policy that ensures that we have, well, the county has the fee simple, which means absolute owner, owner of the property. And then you accept, that's what this resolution is, is an acceptance of that, of the, the road, of these two roads, that the court in Brentford Lane, and there's a plan that will be attached, but you'll also get here, see in here that there's a maintenance bond as well as the commitment for title insurance, and then once the deed's recorded in the, or you adopt this resolution, the deed gets recorded, then the, uh, the attorney for the developer will provide a, a title of, a policy of title insurance, and then that will, that will mean that you own the road, and if there's something, something goes bad in the road, and then as far as ownership goes, then there will be a problem. Then the insurance, title insurance company will probably, will have to pay it, I was on the finish. I will say that I noticed one thing in, in here, in the title insurance commitment, that you need to be aware of, and you take the property basically what, where it is, that somewhere, somewhere along the line, they, you, uh, there was a, there were two exceptions taken, meaning that the property, title insurance company will ensure the, the title to the property except for these things. And one of them, which was a, was a forest land use covenant, which with you and with, with Harris County, so that's no big, big, big trade deal right there. But the one that, the one that caught my attention and is something you really can't do about is a reservation of mineral rights and the, and the, and geological resources that was reserved in, in a number of years back. So that if that, that strike gold out there, then they may be the road. But I doubt seriously that's a fact, but you know, a lot of places you see where there were reserved mineral rights or there have been reserved oil rights or, you know, whatever the case may be. But that is, that's not unusual to see, a reservation of mineral rights either in that. I reckon, it appears that these, everything's in order to accept the DUD court in Brentford Lane and have a late subdivision phase two, and I'm sure I recommend it to you for your approval.
All right, thank you, Mr. Taylor, I have one question. At night, this may not matter at all, but on the deed to the street, it says State of Georgia County in Muskogee.
It, that's probably where the company is out of.
Okay, so that it didn't.
No, that's not making.
It does say in the, you know, first paragraph, it does list Harris County.
Yes, usually, that, it's usually where the state, where the county in the deed is executing.
Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept the road.
Is there a second?
I'll say it.
Okay, there's a motion in the second, to accept Downly Court and Ransford Lane in Abbey Lake subdivision, all those in favor? Motion carries. Is there anything else?
I have, I have got some problems.
Yeah, nothing, is there a need for execution, no need for execution?
No, wait.
Okay, all right, and I will add a motion to adjourn.
I would like to say something before we adjourn.
Sure.
Thursday is the 75th anniversary of D-Day. So I would hope that everyone remembers what those men sacrificed for our country. And if you'll look, I believe they're gonna show on the television, they're gonna actually fly the, actual planes that flew at D-Day and fly them from England back over into Normandy recreating it. And y'all know I teach history, but please, you know, just remember what those men that sacrificed themselves on D-Day did for us. It's a, it's a sacrifice that we should cherish every day.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll motion adjourn.
Can I have a second? All those in favor? Thank you all for coming.